The special meeting, oh, I forgot to ask if they were ready. The special meeting of the Monroe Township Board of Education will come to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we have a roll call, Mr. Gorski?
Certainly. Mrs. Arminio.
Here.
Mr. Braverman. Mr. Chiarella.
Here.
Mrs. Mayo.
Here.
Mrs. Lang.
Here.
Mrs. Carino. Mr. Ryback.
Here.
Mr. Russo.
Here.
Mr. Rutske.
Here, just in time.
Mrs. Kolpanovic.
Here.
Madam Board President, you have a quorum present this evening. In accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law, the Monroe Township Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted August 24th, 2017, at all schools, Home News Tribune, the Cranberry Press, and filed with the Clerk of the municipality.
Thank you. At this time, we'll go to number five on the agenda. Anyone from the public wishing to speak to the agenda, please come to the microphone and give your name and address for the record. Okay, seeing none, we will go to the Business Administrator's report. Mr. Gorski?
Thank you. It is recommended that the Board of Education authorize District Administration to procure professional services as required by New Jersey Department of Education land acquisition statutes and regulations in connection with the Board's exploration of the suitability of the Schoolhouse Road property, which is designated as Block 52, Lot 2.05, on the official tax map of the Township of Monroe and in the Township of Monroe in the County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, for the development of said property into a transportation vehicle depot to accommodate growth in the district.
So moved by Mr. Chiarella, second by Mr. Ryback. Any comments or questions? Mrs. Arminio?
Yes, I think it wouldn't breach any confidentiality to talk about the weekly update because it's essentially just been recorded that we, that the land has been given to us. Is that correct?
Madam, this resolution pertains to the Schoolhouse Road Buckaloo Avenue property behind the firehouse.
That's correct, yes.
Yes.
And Lot 52, Lot 2.05.
Right.
And we can safely say with this resolution that we are accepting the property. Is that correct?
No, I don't.
No, not yet. This, this is required exploration of the land before the Board of Education actually formally resolves to take ownership of it. Part of that will be an environmental search of the property, and as I mentioned in the confidential, it's not as stringent as if the property was going to be used by pupils in the district. As it's a bus depot, there's much less tests that have to be done, but still, we have to do some to make sure you're not in, taking possession of property with liabilities.
Okay, so this resolution is not accepting the said property at this point, but what it is allowing us to do is our due diligence for the property?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? There, we'll have a roll call.
Mrs. Arminio.
Yes.
Mr. Chirrell.
Yes.
Mrs. Mayo.
Yes.
Mrs. Lang.
Yes.
Mrs. Carino. Mr. Ryback.
Yes.
Mr. Russo.
Yes.
Mr. Rutske.
Yes.
And Mrs. Kolpanovic.
Yes.
Madam Board President, resolution passes. That concludes my report.
Okay, then we will go on to number seven on the agenda, and we are very happy to have with us this evening Mary Ann Friedman from New Jersey School Boards Association, and she will be assisting us in creating board and district goals for next year, the 2017-2018 school year. So welcome to Monroe, and this should be an interesting procedure. Always is.
Did you want to go through the Board's self-evaluation? Everybody has their copy, or do you want to just go right to district goals and board goals?
Because I don't know if everybody's had the chance to go through the self-evaluation yet, so I'd rather give everybody a chance to look at it before we just go through it.
Okay. Sounds good. Can I have a piece? Bring it back. Oh. I'd be that way. I just want, please. Okay, so if you would take out your data-informed goal-setting packet, then?
Yes, we do. We have a copy of the board evaluation. We just got a copy. We got two packets. One was the board self-evaluation, and the other was data-informed goal-setting.
So let me just explain what you have in the board self-evaluation packet, okay? There is the information about board self-evaluation, why you do it, what kinds of things you should be looking for when you review the compilation, and you have a green sheet that is, says Monroe Township Board of Education Self-Evaluation Review, and that's a two-sided copy. That's basically for the Business Administrator to put in your CUSAC files. Completing the board self-evaluation is not mandatory by CUSAC any longer, but we do think that it may become mandatory again with this latest review and revision of CUSAC, so it's always a good thing to have in the, in the district files. And then you have the compilation, which is thus far, there are seven people who've completed it, so the compilation is there, just so that you know, we can, you know that we ask you about how you rated yourselves as a board, how you've worked together over the year in those nine areas, and then we ask you how you did as an individual board member. Anything that's over a 3.0, we consider to be a team that's working effectively. So you'll be able to see as you go through there, you have multiple areas of strength in those nine areas, and you have a couple of areas that are opportunities for some growth, okay? And we can talk about that at another point in time. And then you have charts that are just a visual depiction of what you rated yourselves as a board to the value that you gave to each of those nine areas, how you rated yourselves as a board compared to your individual scores, and then how you rated yourself this year as opposed to last year. Okay? Any questions on what I just went over with the board self-evaluation? Okay. And just by way of introduction, I know you've had some changes over the past couple of years with field service reps. I'm Mary Ann Friedman. I'm a field service rep with New Jersey School Boards. I've been with the association since 2008, and I've had multiple counties and, as I was talking to Dr. Kozak yesterday, I've kind of been all over the place. So I was reassigned to Middlesex, Hudson, and the southern portion of Ocean in April or May, and so I'm delighted to be here and to meet with all of you. Dr. Kozak and I worked together before when he was up in Hunterdon County, and I had Hunterdon County and Mercer and Burlington County, so there's literally been a lot of traveling around, okay? So if you take a look then at the board, at the data-driven goal-setting packet, in the packet, there's a blue sheet right in the front, and you have all of the materials, the PowerPoint that is in your packet as well, but this talks about your vision, mission, your strategic planning goals, your district goals, and your board goals. But what I'd like to do first is talk to you about your vision, and this is something that you would have created, and you do have your vision statement, we'll go over that in a minute, but this is something that is usually an outcome of your strategic planning process, and you do have a strategic plan that's in place, I believe you're in your last year, and it's really, you've really created a shared vision of what you aspire your students to be and what you want for them. So goals really are the foundation for effective policy development, for optimizing resource allocation, for planning. They're going to help you with your superintendent's evaluation, because part of the superintendent's evaluation is on goals, how the superintendent does towards the achievement of the district goals. It's going to help in terms of an effective communication plan. It lets you know where you are, so that not only tonight will it show your community members that you've taken the time to set these goals, but as you get your progress reports during the course of the year, it will also let them know that not only were you, you know, concerned enough to do this tonight, to take the time tonight, but you're focused on it throughout the year because you're getting updates on the progress towards those goals. And it also holds the superintendent accountable for the district goals, it holds the board accountable for the board goals, and then it also is helpful towards continuous improvement. Consider the continuous improvement assistance thinking and it values at the sum, not just the total of, not the whole, just not the total of all of its parts, or what's really linked and interwoven and what really makes the difference in continuous improvement. So you have your board cycle, and you've already done your superintendent's evaluation, which was done in May and June, your self-evaluation, which has just been completed, and now we're setting goals. And then after this, after the collabor, and this is one of those times tonight, when I'm going to ask when we're setting the district goals, I'm going to need to see heads going up and down, because that will indicate to me that it's okay with you, okay? And we're going to do this by consensus, so it may not be your first choice, but you can live with it and you can support it and, you know, abide by it. And if heads aren't going up and down, I have no indication that, number one, you're listening, number two, that you're grasping what it is that the rest of the board is looking at, and that it is okay with everybody, that it is a collaborative decision. Because if heads aren't going up and down, I don't go home, and eventually, you will want me to go home. So after tonight, then, you'll determine, the superintendent with the administrative team will develop action plans for the district goals that are set, because you are the what people. You determine what it is you want to see happen in the district, and then the superintendent, usually with the administrative team, works on the how, how he's going to get you from point A to point B over the next year, okay? Then you'll decide on when you want to have updates. We usually recommend three or four times during the course of the year, and those will be presentations, not an hour long, but, you know, maybe five or 10 minutes, going through those action plans, letting you know what we've completed up to this point that was supposed to be completed, if something wasn't completed, why it wasn't completed, and that way, you get to see the steps that are being taken towards the achievement of that goal. And then you'll start out again in the spring with the evaluation of the superintendent. He'll report out on you a good comprehensive review of the district goals, so that he can go in, complete his superintendent part, the superintendent's part of the evaluation on goal-setting. Once he does that and hits the submit button, you'll all get an email that says that your superintendent has completed his portion of the evaluation, and it invites you to go in and complete yours. If you have a conflict of interest, if you have somebody who works in the district, a family member who works in the district, you likely, most likely, will not be able to participate in the superintendent's evaluation. Everybody will get that email. We don't have any way of navigating or of keeping track of who's conflicted and who's not, because that information can change. So nothing will have changed in the conflicts area, it just means that everybody's getting that, that notification after the superintendent completes his portion of the evaluation. So if you are conflicted, just disregard that, okay? And then you'll start doing the board self-evaluation. You'll get both of those back, like we've done this year, and then we'll be sitting here next year doing goal-setting again. So some of the data sources that you want to look at when you're, when you're thinking about your district goals are performance reports, any proprietary assessments that you have going through, that you do, your enrollment projections, your graduation and higher education data. You want to look at staff and community and student input if you do surveys over the course of the year. The board self-evaluation, your CUSAC report, any waiver requirements through NCLB, and board committee recommendations. You also want to look at suspension and discipline data, at absentee rates for both staff and students, that's very important, violence and vandalism, bullying, intimidation, and harassment statistics, and then also culture and climate surveys. Years ago, we've realized that, many years ago, we realized that if kids came to school hungry, they weren't ready to learn. That's why we have breakfast programs in most of the schools today. We've also realized just a few years ago, probably within the last five, that if kids come to school and they don't feel safe and secure, they're not ready to learn either. So climate and culture is really taking a very big and prominent role in what districts are doing in terms of goal-setting these days. Your core benchmark standards, self-explanatory, curriculum instruction, assessments, culture, student support, professional development, efficiency, and organization, and then we get to the goals. So the district goals have to do with program, instruction, facilities, finance, staff development, personnel, all of those kinds of things, and everybody owns those after tonight. So we're going to collaboratively develop those, we're going to take a look at your strategic plan, we're going to take a look at last year's goals and see how the district did in completing those, and then we're going to talk about what, if anything, needs to be carried over from last year into this year. And then after that, the superintendent will own implementing and achieving those goals, but the board will still own providing the resources for those goals, okay? So if, if you all decide, and remember, these are your goals for your district, these are not my goals for you. So if you all decide that you need to hire teachers to be able to decrease the class size in a grade level, perhaps, and if the superintendent then comes to you in a month or so and says, "In order to do this, I need to hire another teacher, we don't have anybody we can move around or, you know, switch grade levels with," and you don't approve that, that hiring of the new person, you're really not enabling him to have the resources that he needs to achieve that goal. Board goals are usually, has to do with process and procedure, governance and policy, and they belong to all of you as well, because all of you sitting here are the board, and we would really like for you to, once the board goals are set, to be able to report out on the achievement towards the board goals as often as you ask the superintendent to report out on the district goals. And the reason for that is because very, very often, what happens is we sit here on a rainy night, on a Tuesday rainy night in August, and we develop these goals, and then the board goals tend to get forgotten, because your focus is on the district goals. So if you're reporting out, when you report out, when you ask the superintendent to report out, that way, you stay focused on them. And the board should create action plans for the board goals as well, and I'll talk about that in a few minutes. Superintendent's personal goals are usually derived from the leadership portion of the evaluation, and then the merit goals are optional and contained in the superintendent's contract. The two pieces that we really don't have anything to do with in terms of facilitating are the superintendent's personal goals and also the merit goals. So you want to consider your vision, district mission statement, the strategic plan, data, and previous goals, so we're going to go through those, and one of the, some of the things you want to ask yourselves are, what is the, what is the thing that's going to create the most essential change, or the most essential improvement in our students over the next year in terms of student achievement? What's going to help them to become critical thinkers, collaborative problem solvers? All of those things that we want them to be able to be when they leave this school district. Is our educational program meeting the needs of all of our students? What areas of improvement do we need to really focus on in the upcoming year? And then do we have the financial resources to be able to support those goals? So that's why we always want your Business Administrator here as well, because he's the one who's going to be able to say, "We can't do that," or, "Yes, we can do that." And he's a member of the board superintendent team also. So your vision statement is, "The Monroe Township Board of Education commits itself to all children by preparing them to reach their full potential and to function in a global society through preeminent education." And that likely came from your strategic plan, and your mission statement was probably validated, or you probably affirmed it when you did the strategic plan as well. And your mission statement is, "The Monroe Public Schools, in collaboration with the members of the community, shall ensure that all children receive an exemplary education by well-trained, committed staff in a safe and orderly environment." These are your strategic planning goals. I believe you're in the last year of that strategic plan. You had curriculum and instruction, community engagement and business partnership, finance and facilities, technology and the arts, and communications. And I, I believe that you've had a recent update on the strategic planning goals. Did you want Dr. Kozak to, to say anything about the strategic planning goals? Or you guys?
Do you want to just give a quick update, or does the board? Because I know we had an update in, I believe it was May. Does anybody need to have an updated update?
There's, 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 there is the strategic plan, which is not the district goals.
Right.
And we gave an update, I gave an update on that, but it's been a while, and I have that presentation. It's up to the board whether they want to, would want to see that again or not, or if you just want me to share it with you electronically at some point.
Is that good? Would you like just to have an electronic update instead of a presentation this evening?
That's fine.
Is that okay? Okay.
This is where you want to see heads going like this, right?
Yeah, right.
For a little noise.
So these were the district goals from last year, and I believe Mary Gassman was in with you last year. Before that, you had Gwen Thornton, so Gwen's on vacation, says hello, and Mary is no longer with the association, she went back to doing what she was doing before. So your first goal was to initiate implementation and community-wide communication, community-wide communication of district facilities planning in anticipation of increased enrollments. Second was to use targeted data to create a long-term plan based on the data analysis derived from the Special Education External Program Review. Continue to analyze multiple data elements and identify areas of opportunity to improve individual student achievement. Identify achievement gaps, analyze benchmark data from NJ DOE, and the 2016 park results and possible gaps between district schools, and the third was to conduct an in-district climate survey. Would you like to go to your?
Well, we, we reviewed, we, we did the review of all the district goals, a little echo there. We reviewed the district goals at, I believe, our May meeting. I have a whole presentation that the board saw and the public saw back in May, so again, I could go back over that, but the board has just recently seen that.
Okay.
So unless, Madam President?
I don't think we need to, again. Send if I?
You want to see that? I can email that to you as well.
Is there anything that you feel from these three goals should be continued into the upcoming year?
Absolutely. Number one.
Mr. Rutske.
I'm sorry.
You know what? I'm going to make this more informal, so you're not going to be Mr. and Mrs. We'll just use your name. Paul.
Excellent.
Okay.
I would absolutely think goal number one is, is a work in progress. It needs to carry over into 2017, 2018.
And if I, if I could, Madam President, to speak to that. The, one of the things I hope to do tonight is to present a template, a draft, if you will, of the goals for 2017, 2018, and I think you'll find, not the exact goal verbatim, but the intent of that goal will certainly be contained within the suggested goals that I'm presenting to the board tonight. But yeah, I absolutely agree, that's, that's an ongoing, yeah.
Would you like to go through that now, Dr. Kozak?
Sure.
The thoughts for, for next year?
Mm-hmm. Okay. So what you'll be receiving is a hard copy, and then I'm also going to present this on the projector, and this is a little different format from the goals that you have seen in previous years. And I chose this format, and I spoke to Mrs. Kolpanovic to get her approval with this template, because I thought this template might be more transparent to the community. I think it'll present more than just two or three district goals, but it'll present overall goals regarding buildings and grounds and transportation, finance, areas of the curriculum, and pressing needs that the district has. This is, the goals listed here, was a, it's a collaborative effort between, again, Dr. Alvik, Mr. Gorski, Mr. Teg, and myself. However, they are a draft, so we can make changes to, to these goals. So what I would like to do is just, I'm going to show the goals on the, up on the screen in a second, and then I'm going to talk to you about the different elements of this chart. The idea being also, that I spoke to Mrs. Kolpanovic, is picture this piece of paper in, on a hard, like a chartboard, perhaps this size, okay? For, for those radio listeners, this size, okay? And if we placed one of these in the entrance of every single school within a district and the administrative office as well, so that it would be a constant reminder for anybody in the community who walked in and said, "Oh, okay, here's what the school district is working on," and we would give updates with a very advanced red, yellow, and green method, okay? But it would be an update on where we are with the goals. So, oh, we have them up here. Thank you. So if you look. That's okay, thank you. I'm just going to bring it up. Play it for a little bit.
Do you want this?
Just, okay. No, it's okay. So I think you'll be able to hear me, and for the people in the back. On the bottom, there are two rectangular boxes, and I'm going to start with those two boxes on the bottom. The first box is our vision statement, all right? "Monroe Township Board of Education commits itself to all, commits itself to all children by preparing..." So that's our vision statement. Underneath it, in the second box, is our mission statement. So again, anybody walking into any of the schools would clearly see what our vision, what we value, our vision statement and our mission statement. On the bottom left-hand corner are the red, or I'm sorry, green, yellow, and red dots, and they would be used to fill in those circles, the Os, if you will, the ovals, when we give updates on where we are. You know, are we green on target? Is it achieved? Is it a continuing initiative? Is it yellow? We're progressing, but we're behind schedule, or moving cautiously, need more information, materials, time, or resources? Or the bottom, it's not achieved, it's held, or we're going to abandon that goal for some reason or another. The, the top of the chart is listed as the 2017-18 All Students Achieving Plan, and that's just an overall name for, you know, for all the goals there, because really, everything we do relates to student achievement, whether it's transportation, buildings and grounds, no matter what it is, it all relates to helping students grow academically, socially, behaviorally, or in any other manner. There are four categories or columns. The four columns, the first one is listed as the best programs. The second column underneath the picture of the kids there is termed the best facilities. The third, with the hands all coming together, is a highly engaged community, and the last column is the most effective and efficient district. In bold at the bottom of each column, you'll see improved student achievement, improved school facilities, increased community involvement, and improved management and operations. So, yes, yeah, I have to, you moved it, thank you. Thank you, Mary Ann. So that's the framework of it. Now, if you, if you're okay, I'll take you through each column and talk about the actual goals. All right? Perfect. Thank you so much. So the first one, under best programs, so if you're looking at it, this would be your first column on your left, underneath it are the pictures of the kids with the pencils in their hand, hands. The first one, continue to develop innovation through real world, real world and project-based learning. So what does that mean? Well, the leadership team has been working on Creating Innovators by Dr. Tony Wagner from Harvard, really, a year ago, and also a book called Dispositions by Doctors Costa and Dr. Calic, and the two of them, that Dispositions are Habits of Mind, kind of worked together along with Creating Innovators. And we use that as a study, the leadership team, to bring more innovative, creative-type strategies into the classroom, and to bring more real-world type problems. So over the past year, some of the, the projects that the kids were involved in that reflected that were, for instance, Brookside, they, the kids worked on a project of looking at the, this way, oh, the microphone, looking at the class, or the, the school space, or the space in the school, and if they wanted to redesign and come up with a better playground or better, more efficient use of some of the rooms or the space located within that school. We looked at that, now, these are young children, you know, fourth and fifth grade, third, fourth and fifth grade. We looked at that as a real-world problem-solving, getting them engaged in critical thinking, and a little innovative, a little out of the box. and a little innovative, a little out of the box. So it crossed over into them using the writing, the language arts literacy skills, their science, their research skills, math, measuring, looking at things. So that was one project. Another project was our students in Oak Tree School creating a 3D model of Monroe Township. And they worked with our high school engineering students. So the high school kids came, well, actually, the elementary kids went to the high school first, and they worked on the projects, they worked on the drawings, they got help from the high school students. And then the high school students, at the end of the project, came down to bring the rendered 3D models of Monroe Township down to the students. So when we talk about innovation through real world and project-based learning, that's what we're talking about. So we've started that, and we want to continue that. The second, explore programs and partnerships to advance STEM initiatives. STEM being, of course, science, technology, engineering, and math. I will often put arts in there as well. You hear me say steam, full steam ahead, because I think creativity, the artistic element is very, very important as well, especially when you get into digital media, graphic design, all of those type of elements. It's important to have that artistic side to the projects also. So we've explored this. We've started to create some partnerships, some internships, some ideas, some work with colleges. And I would like to continue to move along in that direction. You know, continue, because a lot of these things, you don't do them for, you don't get engaged, it's one year and you stop and it's done with. You know, kind of like what Mr. Rutske said with the student growth. You know, you continue these over a course of several years. And each year, we would have advances upon the previous year for what we had the kids engaged in. The third is utilize data to continue to improve student proficiency in language arts, literacy, math, and science. Now, the action plan isn't developed for this because we're just starting to get the data back from Park from last year. We have MAP, our Measures of Academic Performance, that we instituted last year. And although we have the scores from last year, it really, we need time for our leadership team and then the school goals committees and the data teams to really look at that data and to target maybe a specific area. Maybe it's a specific area within math. It could be, it could be, you know, probability and statistics or geometry and measurement, or it could be a language arts literacy area or a particular science area. So this is the overall goal, and then we would develop the action plan and come up with more specific goals of maybe we want to increase student literacy as measured by Park and/or MAP in fourth grade or third grade or fifth grade. We'll be able to have time to develop that. And this is something we do each year. After we develop the overall goals, that's the umbrella that oversees the entire district. And then the principals and the supervisors and Dr. Alvik and Mr. Gorski, myself, we develop the individual school or department goals based on that. So everything is a reflection of the district goals. And then items that are specific to a particular department or school are developed at that school or within that department. The next area underneath that is develop the whole child through cultural awareness, character development, and an emphasis on a healthy lifestyle. We're more than just math, science, language arts literacy, you know, social studies. We really are about that social emotional growth for children, behavioral as well, responsibility, things that they're gonna need, sometimes referred to as the soft skills. You know, but these are important. How to play nice in a sandbox? You know, it's not only important for kindergarten students, it's important for 12th graders. So how can we foster that? We need to look, continually look at our character ed programs. Are we culturally sensitive to diversity within our schools? Are we, are we helping students learn from, I don't wanna say mistakes, but yeah, mistakes. You know, if they, maybe choices they make. Learn from choices, that they can make better choices. These are, these are lifelong skills that we start in preschool and kindergarten and that we want to continue to develop right through 12th grade. And then we really want to track our students beyond that as well. But we want to make sure that we're preparing our students for more than just academic issues, but also these other issues as well. In the next column, under best facilities. A lot of these came from Mr. Tagg. The installation construction of 10 temporary classroom units/trailers at Monroe Township Middle School. You know, we've been talking about that, accommodating our growing student enrollment. And we've talked about and developed those plans for putting in trailers at the middle school, not this year, but for next year, but it's a year-long planning process. The next, development of land donated by Monroe Township to be used for expanded school bus parking. Speaks directly to the resolution that was just read and approved. You know, the development of that land, hopefully, it'll be clear all environmental concerns that we'll be able to expand our transportation on Schoolhouse Lane. The third, continuation of the Monroe Township School District Capital Improvement Program. So every school district, including Monroe, has a school facilities, long-range facilities plan, and certainly continuing that. An example of this past year was the renovative, renovations at Barclay Brook School, the parking lot, the roof, the facade of the building. So there's always things that are, that we have to be done. And the last is application, in that last in that column, is application for safety grants to fund specific safety improvement projects. So Mr. Tagg, as well as others throughout the district, are always looking for ways to save money, looking for grants to fund things. So this is, and we received several safety grants. So this is a continual, continual process. The next column, the highly engaged community. Brought in parent slash community engagement and communication. We have, we took the initiative to expand communication, really, two years ago. We continued it last year, this past school year. And we're looking to expand it even further as we go into this school year. Even with the Public Relations Fund and as we move ahead. And we're looking at how do we communicate, maybe with print, with, you know, the, the old-school method? You know, print as opposed to, as opposed to digital resources and get that, that information out to every member in our community, including our adult communities, who may not rely on the digital media as much as maybe other people in the community. Engage the community in discussions regarding the need for a referendum, is the next point. Collaborate with the community stakeholders in implementing the next phase of the one-to-one technology initiative at Monroe Township High School and develop a future-ready team. So New Jersey embarked on something called Future Ready Schools. And I signed a pledge for it a couple of years ago, and now it's starting to pick up some steam. And Dr. Alvik and I were talking, and we think it's a continuation of what they used to have was, was innovative schools. I can't remember the name of the...
Innovate New Jersey.
Yeah, Innovate New Jersey. But this is looking at technology specifically. And there's a process where the board would be asked to pass a resolution to say that we are engaged in future-ready work. And the state is sponsoring through partnerships with corporations, or sponsoring different workshops throughout the state to help all schools become, you know, technologically ready, I guess, for what future schools are considered. So part of that process is involving a parent group, community stakeholders. Well, looking at our plan to look at the one-to-one initiative, that also involves parents and community members. So rather than have two separate groups, the future-ready really is aligned to what we're doing already. We could combine both of them and have that as one. We could look at the one-to-one initiative, look at all, you know, Apple, Dell, Lenovo, all the different companies. And at the same time, look at the components of future-ready schools to make sure that we are preparing our students and we're, and our schools are future-ready, which I think we are well on our way and probably further along than a lot of districts. But still, it's a good process to go through. And the last, and Mr. Gorski, I think, would argue the most important column, is the most effective and efficient district. And the first note there is continue, continue our efforts to seek fair and equitable state aid funding. Of course, Mr. Tirrell chairs our ad hoc committee in that effort. So that would speak to not only what Mr. Gorski, myself, Dr. Alvik, and other people are doing, but also, you know, this is a district goal, not a board goal, but it would be collaborative, if you will, or, you know, work with the ad hoc committee. The second is to produce a 2018, 2019 school budget, which would provide for 300 to 500 additional students, support the curriculum, address aging school facilities, add new quality staff required for growth while staying within the tax levy cap. No small feat, but certainly something that we would like to work toward. And last in that column is to continue to pursue spending efficiency and best fiscal practices. So that's an overall, the bullet points, if you will, are certainly, can be changed, can be altered. But I'm proud to present that. I think that would capture a lot of what we're trying to achieve. Thank you, Madam President.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mary.
So any questions for Dr. Kozak, Mr. Ryback, Steve?
Thank you. I have a couple of questions and...
Sure.
Just, I guess, a statement or two. Number one, I'm very glad that you mentioned steam instead of just STEM because I think the arts is something that we can't minimalize, or minimize, rather, excuse me, you know, in this type of situation. Very important, and it has a great impact on students academically as well, so sports. But let's just get it to say steam for now. The other thing I'd like to emphasize is the, the importance of project-based learning. I've been doing some reading, I know I've shared some with you, from professional journals, on how well schools are doing to integrate this kind of instruction. And it's been, it's not such a new thing. It's been going on for, you know, quite a few years and very successfully.
Right.
So I'm glad that, you know, we're integrating that as well. One question I had, when we were looking over some of the results of testing for, you know, as far as bridging that gap, and I noted that third grade, I think, was, am I right in saying third grade was a bit of a problem?
Well, what I looked at, basically, looking at the latest Park results, I'm pretty sure that every single grade, every single subject, and Dr. Alvik will bear it, we haven't analyzed everything, so it's preliminary. But I'm pretty sure that in every single grade and in every single subject that is tested, we are above the state average.
Right.
However, that's not our ultimate goal. It's nice to beat the state average, but we hold very high expectations in Monroe Township. So third grade in language arts is one area that we looked at. And the third bullet there, under best programs, is utilize the data to continue to improve student proficiency in language arts, literacy, math, and science. Third grade, I actually wouldn't be looking at third grade. I would be looking at fourth grade. Because the cohort of students that took that Park exam are now in fourth grade. So we would want to look and see in two areas. One, how are those students now doing in fourth grade? And two, we would want to look at our K to two programs to see how are we preparing our students for third grade? When you look at the state scores, the scores, the Park scores from around the state, you'll see variations in each grade. You will see that third grade is a little lower across the state as well. All different reasons for that. I know New Jersey ASK, it used to be a different test. It could be, these are sample assessments. You know, it's not, every single thing, they sample different areas. So we would look at it as a two-pronged approach to that.
And finally, I promise, last question. For the trailers, isn't it 10 and a double trailer for FIZED? So it's really 12?
It is. Yeah. Yeah. I, when we put the, when I asked for input, I got very long things, and I try to condense it. But we could actually make that 12. Yes. Thank you.
Mr. I mean, Michelle, Michelle?
Yes. Okay. So this would be almost like poster form in each, in each school?
Yes.
Like a big poster, and it's gonna be sort of an active poster? Because we're going to do some colors and show progress? No, I actually think it's a very brave and courageous thing for the superintendent to do. Because, you know, way before my, my first term, and now, almost a year into my second, I've been coming to Board of Education meetings, and I have to say that no superintendent has ever put this out before and put your goals and, and works and desires and expectations of the students out in front of everybody. So every time a parent or even a teacher or someone from the community looks at that, it's a dynamic and active thing, and it leaves you open to a lot of criticism. So I do think it's a courageous thing. I think it's important, and it goes to transparency. And I think it would also help to, to show, like, the third thing, the highly engaged community. If we all know that these are the goals, we can judge. We judge the board. We could judge the administration. We could judge you, unfortunately, individually. But I, I, I think it's an exceptional opportunity for, for community engagement because people will sort of know what we're looking to do. They may ask more questions. They may get more involved. Because we have, you know, we've always asked for a plan or an outline or something that we can relate to. And I, like I said, I think it's rather courageous of you, but I think it's important and, and a very good start. And I, and I hope it works, you know? And I appreciate that you always talk about the students and high expectations. So, thank you. I think it's a great idea.
Thanks.
And it'll be colorful, right?
Yes, yes.
It'll be a nice picture. And I have seen, I mean, I think when Mr. Ryback and I had once attended, once looked at a school right before the school was open, right before the school year, and there was nothing in any of the cases, and we were a little disappointed that there was, there was really no invite, anything to invite either the students or the community into the school. You know, I think all the cases should be filled. There should be activity. And these are bulletin boards, and, and we should have something like this in every...
Yeah, yeah. Something must be said for first impressions.
Exactly.
When you walk into a building, you want that, you want that inviting kind of feeling and knowing right away what, what we stand for and what we're all about.
Right, and a purpose for the new school year. So I, I think it's a great idea. Thanks.
Ms. Jill, Ms. Jill?
Is there a reason we don't have passing a referendum on this?
That can certainly be changed. I, I, I was very hesitant to even put referendum down because officially, the board has not approved that. So I was, you know, I, I thought often I said, should I even put referendum down because the board hasn't officially done that? I would be more than happy to put down, pass a referendum on that at the board's, if the board so wishes to do that, or some wording like that. But again, I, I have brought this out as a draft. I'm certainly more than happy to, to change it, to edit it. Madam President, it's, the board would have to let me know as a whole if you did want me to put, change the wording of that for referendum.
Do you want to discuss that one now? Because it's...
Yeah, I mean, because we didn't pass the future-ready thing either, and that's on there. So I, and the referendum is a very important...
Mm-hmm.
So how does the board feel about that?
I don't, I, I think saying passing a referendum is a big, is something we really can't say because we don't have the approval of the community. So it's not just, I mean, we can, you know, we can do all of our diligence to pass, to try to pass the referendum. But the refer, passing, the actual passing, the verb passing of the referendum is up to the voters.
But it's a goal.
Our goal should be to develop and present a referendum.
I don't have a problem with that, but I, I think passing a referendum is not up to us. It's up to the community and the voters. Now, I think Patty, you know, that language is acceptable.
Repeat that, Patty. To develop and present a referendum. Because in the end, our goal is to have that referendum passed.
Right.
Yes, yes.
I don't even know, do you say with the ultimate goal of passing the referendum?
I mean, because...
Or is that a given, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We may fail at that goal, but the goal is to actually pass it.
Right, right. Yeah, I, I went back and forth a lot on that, Jill, and whether to put anything about it or not at all, and, you know...
There you go. There you go.
So... So...
We said to develop, present, and pass a referendum.
Yeah, I still...
Or develop and present a referendum that the community could pass.
I think the original one was, was right. Not to include pass a referendum, to develop and present is, I think, more proper. It goes without saying we want it to pass.
But that's our goal then?
Putting it in there for the community to read might help encourage them.
It's a highly engaged...
But there's a politicking end to it.
Yeah.
When you, which I think you should stay away from. We should have learned our lesson from the fair funding, stay away from politics.
But it's not, go ahead.
In the second one where it says a highly engaged community, engage the community in discussions regarding the need for a referendum and then add for the need to pass a referendum so that we're working toward, that's our goal is to pass a referendum. So we put that in the engaged community and then the facilities is to develop and present a referendum, we're then covering both bases. Because our goal, if we're going to be engaging the community, or our reason for engaging the community is to get a referendum passed, correct?
Well, we want to engage the community in more than just getting a referendum, we want them to support the school district.
Right, but I'm looking at Dr. Kozak's second goal where it actually says engage the community in discussions regarding the need for a referendum.
Steve?
Maybe just for wording, we could say for the, you know, engage in the community for the importance of passing a resolution. Because in this way, we're not saying to pass a resolution, but for the importance of passing a resolution.
Yes, once again, I mean, we cannot pass the referendum, the voters have to. And I think we want to, we want the voters to know it's their responsibility to pass the referendum, but to say, we could say our goal is to engage the community for the necessity of passing a referendum, I have no problem with that. But we, you know, I think it would be almost counterproductive to say, you know, to leave the voting public out, you know? We need, we need the public's, you know, approval. So to say that a goal of ours is to pass the referendum, I don't, I don't think that actually works.
But if we work in there, our goal is to, for a successful referendum, because obviously successful means it passes, but you're not saying the word pass, you're, you're, I don't know.
It's more positive?
I'm just trying to, yeah, massage it a little bit.
To engage the public in a successful referendum?
Right.
Yeah, there are some things that we can control, what happens in the school, and we can take corrective action to correct it. But when we put something out for a vote, we can't control it. So what happens if it fails? Are we failures?
No, I don't, I don't think we are failures, but we would be able to learn a lesson and hopefully that another one, because we would have to go out again if there was another one, and hopefully learn enough so that we could pass or have a successful second referendum.
But it goes without saying, if we're presenting it, it's for passing. I think it should stop there.
I also think that sometimes if we say we're going to pass a referendum, the public, there are some members of the public who may not understand that it's actually their duty to approve the budget, it is not the board. They may say, well, the board has to pass the referendum. No, that's really not what happens. I think we need to be really clear that our responsibility is to go forward a referendum and the necessity of it, but to say that it's our goal to pass the referendum, we really can't do that.
About what I said, to engage the public in a successful referendum.
Mr. Gorsky?
I think we may have left that one term from the Student Advisory Committee and so on. So I offer to develop and plan a referendum which will satisfy the needs of a growing student body. Because it's the growth of students and the enrollment increases that are requiring the referendum and it leaves out the chance of how the vote's going to go.
I don't understand why we want to put on the chance because... It is what it is. I mean, that's, you know, the voters will decide.
Steve?
Just want to emphasize something. We're using the words engage the public, so there's a give and take. We, you know, we want to share what's on our minds, but we also want to hear from the public what's on their minds and we have to try and present information to them. So, you know, in some way, we have to, when we're using the word engage, you know, we have to be clear that the reason for the engagement, the reason for the engagement is to explain to them the needs that we have to build new schools and why we're presenting a referendum. I think that would eliminate any political thing because it's, it's a give and take. It's just as important for us to hear from the public as it is for us to explain what our needs are, what we see as our needs.
So we would still need to come up with language to incorporate all that into a...
I think we have a bullet.
Oh.
I think, yeah.
Is everybody okay with that?
I think one might said, yeah, doesn't...
Can I just clarify something? What I'm hearing from all of you, I'm sorry. Sorry, that was very loud. What I'm hearing from all of you and sitting and listening is you could put another bullet under the best facilities and under improved school facilities to develop and plan a referendum which will satisfy the needs of a growing student body. And then under the highly engaged community, increase community involvement, engage the community in discussions regarding the need for and importance of passing the referendum. Would that, would that fit? Because that lets the community know that that's their portion, passing the referendum is their portion, and it's your all responsibility to put forth a referendum that hopefully will pass in listening to and having those conversations with them. Can you repeat it again?
I just have, yeah, because you said develop and plan, isn't planning and developing the same thing? Shouldn't it be develop and present?
Develop and present, develop and, whichever. A referendum which will satisfy the needs of a growing student body. Could be under improved school facilities and the best facilities.
If you would, one more time, because I'm writing it.
Okay.
Develop and present.
Develop and present a referendum which will satisfy the needs of a growing student And that goes under the best facilities. And then under the highly engaged community, and this is what I'm hearing from you guys, so I'm trying, I'm not trying to tell you what to do, but it's what I'm hearing you all kind of come to say. And then under a highly engaged community, the second bullet, engage the community in discussions, which, which means a back and forth, okay? It's a discussion, it's not a presentation, it's a discussion regarding the need for and importance of passing the referendum.
The need for and passing?
The need and importance of passing the referendum.
Importance of passing the referendum.
Just something for you to consider.
Is that a, is that a, sorry, yes?
Does everybody agree with that? Is everybody, is everybody okay with that one? Adding both of them? Frank and Michelle?
So, Dr. Kozak, I have a question for you.
Sure.
Are each one of these bullets underneath each of the topics going to be a goal?
Uh...
Where you're going to have an action plan for each one?
Could I make a recommendation on that?
Sure.
You, you don't want to have more than four to five goals.
Right.
Okay? So improving stu, I'll get close. So improving student achievement can be a goal, improving school facilities can be the goal, increasing community involvement, all of those bottom areas, those can be your goal areas. And then these can be objectives underneath that. They'll still need action plans developed, but they'll be part of the achievement towards that goal. So then what can happen is, and I think you and I had this conversation yesterday as well, very oftentimes, boards are now, and districts are now going with a very broad statement for the goal, a very broad goal statement. And then what changes is the action plan items underneath that every year. Because let's face it, as much as we would like to be able to say, we have, every student is achieving at their, their highest level, we don't need to worry about that anymore, that's not going to happen because we're constantly getting new students in, we're constantly getting staff, we're constantly getting changes from the state. I know that's hard to believe that we get changes from the state, but we do. So all those things come into play and then you have students that are leaving and students that are coming into the district. So you can have that broad statement, you're always going to have a student achievement goal because that's what you do here in a school district. You, you want to work towards student achievement and presumably that's why you're all on the board, to improve student achievement in a fiscally responsible way for your district and for your students. So it would make sense to me that these would be four goal areas and then those would be act, objectives within those goal areas. And then the action plans even within that can change from year to year. And these four goal areas that you have under here also go along nicely with your strategic plan.
Right. So the, the four goal areas you were saying at the bottom, improved student achievement, improved school facilities, increased community involvement, and improved management operations.
Right. And then the, the actual specifics of the goal, the smart part of the goal, goes into the action plan. So that's where, as you were saying before, Dr. Kozak, when you're talking about utilize data to improve student proficiency in LAL, math and science, your action plan items within that may say, we'd like to improve a certain percentage in grade three, in grade four, whatever. That's where the specificity comes in, in the action plans. But a lot of districts are maintaining a goal statement that's very broad because, again, we're always working on facilities and finance, we're always working on student achievement, we're always working on community involvement, those are all, and operations. So those are all the areas that all districts are generally going to be working on. As I said to Dr. Kozak yesterday, you're in a unique situation which is pretty different from most of the other districts in the state. Many districts are dealing with a declining enrollment and you have just the opposite that's happening here with an increasing enrollment. So you are very unique in that regard. But the goal statements can certainly, doesn't matter whether you're in a declining enrollment or whether you're in an increasing enrollment, you still want those to improve and increase those areas for your school district. So I think that that, that can be the way that that happens so that he doesn't come away with four, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 15 goals.
Well, that's what my concern was, because last year...
I have another concern. You know, we have the future, we have the collaborative community on implementing the next phase of the one-to-one technology initiative, which is a year-long endeavor. And then a future-ready team, the future-ready initiative which I was reading about is a huge initiative. I'm not quite sure that we want to do both of these things in one year. I'm thinking we need to put off, you know, the future-ready one for another year because we're already doing the one-to-one initiative which has, you know, which is multifaceted.
I second what Jill's saying because future-ready is actually to certify our school district as a future-ready school. So it's a whole, it's a whole program with NJIT and the idea is to implement digital learning strategies throughout the school district. And the one-on-one initiative that we have to go through is for the high school. I just think it's too much for us to bite off at one time with the referendum and everything else and going, trying to bring back into the whole child and to be pulled into the future-ready school without being prepared for it, just is concerning and disconcerting.
If I could just, um... Certainly there are valid points and I don't want to take on more than we can handle. The future-ready, I spoke to some other superintendents who were engaged in that and I've been looking at it, and up until this year, everything that I've been seeing from future-ready has been workshops, very vendor-specific type things. So I wasn't rushing to get into it because I wanted to really see, is this something worth for us to get involved in? And what I'm seeing now is, this is the first year and at the school boards convention, there'll, there'll be a, not a kickoff, but a, you know...
Presentation.
A presentation of that, thank you. And I didn't want the district to be left behind and I looked at what would be required and you need that parent group, that community stakeholder, which is the same thing we want to do with a one-to-one. So that's why I combined them. But I have no issue at all with taking that off and we could do more of a watch and see with the future-ready.
The first year, there's always kinks that need to be worked out and, you know, maybe the second year will be much better.
Yeah, and I think we're probably ahead of the pack for a lot of the districts with...
We are.
Yeah.
And I'd like to get more input from the curriculum.
Committee?
I couldn't get the word.
Yeah.
You know, the T, you know what I mean?
Yep.
Just find out what they're, because it's a lot of commitment. I did attend, they did a training, NJ School Boards, did one at Mercer County Community College. And this is, I mean, it's huge, the commitment.
So then we could cross out and develop a future-ready team? Is that what you're saying?
That's what I'm hearing, right? Yeah.
And that would be easier for you?
Uh, yes. Absolutely.
I'm not saying that we won't do it, but give us some more time to explore.
Not this year?
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure that you weren't giving yourself 15 goals because we know that it all comes back on the evaluation.
Right. Well, so, let's, if I could, just expand on it. What you see before you is really maybe a little different with this, but it really what is what goes on day to day, month to month, year to year. When I talk about a collaborative approach, when I talk about a team approach, this is certainly involves, Dr. Alvek, Mr. Gorsky, these are all areas that, that are being addressed. It just, when we come up with three district goals, it doesn't touch on all these areas. And going back to the transparency and some of the feedback that I received last year about, well, do we, does everyone know where we're going, what we're doing? I thought, let's put it all out there. I oversee all this, but certainly, when it comes to, let's say, facilities, I'm not following Mr. Tag around to make sure that the roof is on correctly, I trust that he knows what he's doing in that area. The finances, I certainly am not going to question CPA on, you know, how the fiscal, you know, operations are handled on a day-to-day basis. So, you know, at the risk, as Mr. Armagnio said, of putting it all out there, I just thought it was important to put it all out there. And then how I'm evaluated on that, was certainly something that has to be determined by the board and, you know, I'd be certainly openly discussing that so that we wouldn't go through 15 individual areas there. I'm not looking to open myself up to that either, but at the same time, I think it's very important that people understand what goes on in a school district. So if we can find a balance to that, that would be great.
Michelle?
Since we're changing language, maybe instead of develop, explore a future-ready concept? If you want to keep it in. I mean, I'm okay with taking it out.
Yeah, I, after hearing what Jill and Patty said, you know, I would be okay with taking it out and then we go through the curriculum committee and we start, like at school boards, we'll go down and see the presentation and hear more about it and, you know, friends of mine that are involved, I'll stay in contact with them and ask them...
We let them do the work and then we can follow next year.
I like that idea. Yeah, that's good.
Correct all the mistakes.
Right.
Can I, can I ask a question?
As we're looking under the most effective and efficient district where it says produce a 2018, 2019 school budget. Don't we do that every year? I don't, I mean, like, is that really necessary to put that there that we, what I've seen is, in the years that I've come as an attend, you know, as a member of the public and then now as a board member, they, this district works really hard to do that while staying within the tax levy. Is it something that, I'm just wondering, is it something that has to be a goal? Because what happens if we can't?
Yeah, well, I think we have to be, we have to be honest, you know? I mean, looking at the additional students and trying to stay within a tax levy and then trailers, I think in one side, having that out in front of all the schools for people to see, they understand the challenges. And, you know, I've said this to the board before, I'm not afraid to, to take on a challenge. And as I make the note, when I talk to principals and I, and directors and supervisors and everyone else, and we hope that they encourage the teachers, don't be afraid to take on a goal that you may not achieve because you're trying to stretch a little bit and you may end up getting close and it's not the end of the world if you don't achieve every single goal. You want to achieve it, but if you, if you always place goals that are safe, then how much are you really pushing? So that was Mr. Gorsky's wording on that and, you know, we're all in this together, so get the light boats ready, Mike, if we're not able to achieve that.
That's a big part of what he does all year.
Yeah.
But I like your explanation, like, it makes sense to put it out there so that people see, this is what we, we do this.
With the additional students and.
Within that, yep.
And this is why you have the referendum coming.
Yep.
Three hundred to five hundred children is a school in most communities.
Michelle?
Yeah, just to say, I think even though it seems redundant to us and our goal is always to do that, I think that's the biggest thing, again, that the public looks at. I mean, it is, along with finding a good superintendent, it is the biggest responsibility that the board has. And, you know, they're concerned every year. So, I, and with, we keep saying our enrollment and what you said about the changes, I think that has to be a priority. We have to show the, and we, you know, we're getting a lot of new taxpayers. So, for them to see that, it might be the first time they're seeing it. We've gone through it over and over again, but they're seeing it for the first time. They want to know with their new tax bill.
What it covers.
That we're going to be very, very efficient on that and not just, you know, because I think there's a danger to say, we have to have a referendum, we're expanding, we're doing this. And then if we don't say we're going to have a most, a best fiscal practice, they're going to, you know. I mean, not everybody's going to think that, but I think it needs to be kept there. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? So, oh.
And then, most efficient and most effective and efficient district. What if you post, try to take a look at the different types of contractual arrangements that we have to see if there's maybe more cost-effective way of doing some of the contracts? So, for example.
That would be more area.
Just like an outsourcing model where you have control over certain aspects of it, the employment part. And, because we have some junior staff, for example. You can correct me if I'm wrong, but let's say they're earning forty-five thousand dollars a year. When you include all the benefits, it's costing the district a hundred thousand. Is there a way that that can be changed? Can we look at maybe different models which may impact that where maybe they get higher salary, reduce benefits which saves the district more money, which can be used for education? This would be something new. It would be a bold move. I think it's something that we should look at because on the fair funding side, it's pretty clear the state has no money. So, we're not getting anything there. And the taxpayers is, that's the only option that's left. And a lot of them, I don't think are too happy with the higher taxes. So, I think there's plenty of room there and some creative ways of managing the staff under different arrangements which would be suitable to them as well as the district. They may even be happier with such.
Is that possible?
Well, I remind the board that we did engage in that with the special education audit. You know, we had a firm come in and review all the special education practices and recommend efficiencies and improvement there.
A different model of contract for staff.
Labor contracts?
Are you talking more about outsourcing?
Yes, that would follow more of an outsourcing model. For, for example, you may have those that fall under the educational category, teachers and so on. They may stay the same, but for other support staff, they would be under maybe a different contractual arrangement.
Sure.
So, I think what you're referring to in the context of.
Paul, can you talk into the mic, please?
Okay. Maybe in the context of substitute teachers or paraprofessionals. I know in Jamesburg, we've outsourced both of those. So, we are no longer responsible for health benefits and other. So, outsourcing substitutes and outsourcing paraprofessionals has actually saved our district hundreds of thousands of dollars. It's a process to go through and for the size of Monroe, I don't know that it's feasible, but I, maybe that's along lines of what you're thinking.
I wasn't considering so much the academic, staff that work in the academic area, teaching substitutes and so on, but more support staff.
I'll say that, you know, a lot more goes on behind the scenes than I think the board's aware of in that regard. We're constantly looking at different areas of outsourcing. I remember a conversation recently where we talked about that very subject that Mr. Rotsky brought up with the board attorney and we looked at paraprofessionals in particular. We've had, you know, we've struggled as a board with outsourcing transportation. There was an initiative to outsource more routes because we were having some driver issues, behavioral issues. And we found that the service fell off compared to our in-house and now that is completely reversed and we're looking to bring it back in-house. I feel that with every budget, we're looking at different areas each year, considering outsourcing. There's no conversation that's too difficult to have been had at administrative level with a lot of different areas.
So, when I use the word outsourcing, I'm not talking about hiring companies to do the task. It's just a different contractual arrangement with the staff, support staff. Maybe they receive more pay, their pay would increase, but benefits would decrease and the school, the district would save money. This type of. And you have control of all the high.
Absolutely.
Just for clarification, you know, support staff means many different things to different people. Could you be more specific with what groups of people you are talking about?
People that work in transportation, IT support, security. And I'm sure there are other areas, many of the administrators, secretaries.
Because what, some of the groups that you're mentioning are in bargaining units. So, we couldn't just easily move out of that. If the people that are not in a bargaining unit, I think, you know, having been in districts that is, we, I've been in, you know, Hunter County, outsourced technology. I've been in a district where we outsourced all of our paraprofessionals and the substitutes. I've been in a district where we outsourced transportation, you know, for four thousand students. It's, you lose quality, you have to be very, very careful. So, I'm not saying it's a no, but I'm just saying, when we're looking at fiscal, being fiscally responsible, there's also a service, you know, the quality of service they receive and how much sometimes you end up paying more for training and for other things. So, I'm just putting that on the table as well as a consideration.
It depends on how you manage the outsourcing. If you have full control inside and you manage, and you have your directors who manage the operation.
Cafeteria.
Yes. What I'm asking here is that it be considered, that a variety of options be considered.
Yeah, that's for the board to decide. It's not, you know, my decision, but certainly it's the board's decision on that.
Madam?
Yes.
You know, in that regard, we are doing it in a lot of areas too. All the food service workers, with the exception of the director, are outsourced. Falcon Care ECE was designed and modeled around a non-affiliated staff model. So, there are a lot of tactical areas where, like Dr. Kozak said, where we can, we can accomplish those areas and we have. And there are some that are more sticky because they are labor units.
Hi, Dan.
I'm saying for the future, if it can be added here, then some review would be.
And since we're negotiating in a negotiating year right now, I'm not quite sure that outsourcing is a word that people are wanting to hear out there. But I think as.
It's not such a bad word. Some people prefer it.
Well, that's.
Depends on how you structure it.
Right, and it also depends on the needs and, right. So, I'm sure as we go along, we'll be looking at the best way to handle the fiscal responsibility here. Does anybody want to?
No.
I don't think right now is the time to talk about that because we're on the, in negotiations with the MTEA and I just don't think timing is the, is the best timing for a discussion like that.
And then I have a question on your most effective and efficient district. Continuing our efforts to seek fair and equitable, I think we're not going to ever get the funding, but maybe instead say state funding formula?
Sure.
Does anybody? Because I think we got all the fair funding we're ever going to get until we change the formula. I don't know how anybody feels about that.
Madam, there's two considerations there. One, we're hearing from legislators that they're going to continue with SFRA 2008 for a while longer and look at additional revenue sources to try to fully fund it by phasing that in over a period of time. Of course, we'll be engaged in all those discussions to try to get as much juice out of the current formula as possible. But like, as we said before, and which was phase two of Greenstein's letter, Monroe is really never going to achieve satisfaction until we get a new funding formula and we contribute to its design. So, there's.
Can we put both of them in there?
You know, as long as you're understanding, I would respectfully ask that these are district goals and there's so much we can do. We can try to get that, but just in May or June of next year, that everyone remembers that, that, you know.
Well, it was just a thought I threw out there.
No, no, absolutely.
We don't have to.
No, I don't mean that. I mean, whatever the board wants on there.
The funding really fall under purview of Ken's committee, the ad hoc committee and what they're trying to do? So, that, you know, it's already, we formed an ad hoc committee to try and get more state aid, a fair share of state aid and maybe working in the formula could be part of what they're trying to do. It doesn't have to be mentioned in district goals. Seems to be a given.
Michelle, did you have a question?
No, I'm okay.
So, am I changing it or not?
No.
Sorry.
No, that's okay. So, then we do have, we have four goals.
So, anything across the bottom?
Without, right.
Does that work for everybody? Dr. Kozak?
It does and if I could, just generally, is the board, do you like this format better? Just the framework and having it up in the schools? I think you do from, yeah, okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, so, I just want to tell you because it's like eight o'clock. So, if anybody's hungry or you want a cup of coffee, we have stuff over there. So, feel free to walk over, we're having a discussion. So, I guess we have to go into, so we have the district goals.
You have district goals, if everybody's in agreement to that. You have district goals and I do think this is, to have this in schools, I think is very welcoming and is also very transparent and it also lets everybody know that you're holding each other accountable to moving forward on these things. So, you know, and Dr. Kozak's point about that first one, continue our efforts to seek fair and equitable state aid funding, you're going, you're going to show that you've continued the efforts, not that you actually got the fair state funding because that's probably not going to happen. So, you know, some of those things are going to, you're going to see progress towards them. And the other thing that's really important to remember when you're doing the superintendent's evaluation is because you're starting, you have to start that evaluation in April usually in order to get everybody done by, you know, May so that you can get it by the end of May so you can have your summary, write your summary, your summary evaluation and then have your summary conference. You're always evaluating on progress towards the achievement of the goals. Did we get to everything that we said we were going to get to by this timeframe? So, that's where the action plans come in and why you need to determine what dates and when you, how often you want to receive updates on those. Because then you'll be able to see in that, you know, April-May timeframe when Dr. Kozak is giving you a very comprehensive update so that he can go in and do his portion of the evaluation, you'll be able to see, did we accomplish everything that we were supposed to accomplish by April fifteenth or April thirtieth? That's the important part. It's the progress towards the achievement of the goal. Most of the time, the goal, unless it's a very short-term goal, is not achieved. Okay? So, the next thing that we have are the board goals. So, these were your board goals for last year. Each board member will attend one training session in addition to their state mandated governance training each year. Establish a plan and implement a cohesive document, data management system, which will support everyone's requirements and provide an intuitive library system for all district data and documentation and evaluate and adopt a plan for enrollment growth and facility needs. How do you feel you did on those three areas in terms of as a board? Progress towards achieving those goals?
We completed number two. Because now we're using board docs. Okay. Right. Michelle?
I slightly disagree.
Okay.
And I had a discussion with the superintendent. We, I think it's a wonderful management system, but it's not fully functioning yet and it's a work in progress because it's a big system. I think that, like, the policies are not in there. Once we approve the policies and everything, I think they should be uploaded into there because the public can access it, right? To a certain extent, I think it's accessible.
Yes, there's a link on our website for them to get to the board agendas. And originally, we didn't include the policies in there because we use another automated system, Strauss Sme.
Right.
But we should be able to put a link in there that'll take them to Strauss Sme.
Yeah, well, or, well, because I actually use.
Excuse me.
I mean, I thought this was big for our purposes that I should be able to go into that section, that policy section and draw up all the policies, at least that we've been approving. So, I don't, all of those categories are not filled. So, I think it's a great system, we should continue to use it, but I think somehow all of the categories should be utilized and we can get access to it a little bit. And if you want to put a link, fine, as long as that doesn't take forever to get, go to the link and get.
Yeah, absolutely. It should be user-friendly. You want that policy, you hit it and it should open up.
Okay. But all of, if you, if you open each one, it's, they're not filled yet. And I think it's a great tool, so if we could just get that up and running. Now, like I said, it's a, it's progressive, so I think it's partially fulfillable.
What about the first goal?
How are we to know?
I guess we each only know.
I, you know, I was thinking the same thing because I know that, I'm pretty sure that Nancy reaches out to tell us when there's mandated governance training.
Yeah.
Yeah, that. It says one extra. So, could you get, as the president, could you get a report? And just to say that, not necessarily individuals, I don't know if it's appropriate, but to say that, you know, seven out of nine people have done that and maybe, I don't know, how would we?
What you, one of the things that.
I'm sorry, I missed the first part of the question. Is it, is it the monitoring of board members' requirements for training?
Yes.
That was always my responsibility and I worked with Nancy on that. We have a schedule of every board member and when they're required to accomplish each one and we reach out to members and we offer when the training dates are and the ones that are formal and the ones that are online. And with, with one exception, since I've been the BA, we've been in full compliance ever since.
But, well, our goal was in one additional training session. Does Nancy keep that record as well?
If you're going to do something extra, we'll keep a record of it, yes.
You may not have a record of it though because if you don't have to register them, if it's a free program, they can register themselves. So, my recommendation would be to you that if you schedule yourself for a county meeting, if you register to go to a county meeting or to a regional training or when you, if you go to workshop and you go to programs, if you let the board president know or if you have somebody that you want to be in charge of that and they can just indicate that somebody has, you know, who has done that. I'm sorry?
At the convention, we all go to the convention, so we all basically.
Well, we don't welcome.
Madam?
Yeah.
I think we accomplished it, but I'm just saying, we don't really have a full record.
If you've gone to a county meeting.
Because I know sometimes when I go to something, I usually register.
Right.
Through the, through the, the board office.
Oh, okay.
The formal courses that are offered, particularly the ones that require a fee and are board-approved, the ones that are offered by school boards, are much more thorough than some of these more informal ones. I just don't know if there's much gain in some of these informal ones to really feel like you've accomplished a goal with some of them.
Well, that's a different question.
You know, like, you know, the county meetings. You know, like, you know, the county meetings and things like that.
The question is, do we all attend one extra, which I think we might have.
The county, the county programs all have a training aspect to them, of at least a half hour, 45 minutes, usually. So there's usually training and a topic, you know, in addition to the networking and to the reports that you hear. So you, you could consider that a training program. We've also started with regional training programs again. We just had a summer leadership program that was in South Brunswick. Did any of you get to that? I don't remember seeing anybody. The one that was in South Brunswick on social media?
Patty, did you go to that one? Social media, South Brunswick?
The central one was in South Brunswick, but somebody could have gone to the northern one or to the southern one as well. And we have a leadership weekend coming up. We're bringing back the leadership weekend that some of you may remember from way back when, so that will be in April. So that will certainly be something that, that you could, could attend as well. And the workshop, the programs at workshop would certainly, those are, most of those are not vendor commercials. Most of them are training, so.
Do we want to continue that goal next year? Does anybody feel like we need to continue that goal next year?
I, I personally feel like that goal is like what Dr. Kozak was saying. We're making life a little too easy on ourselves with that goal. It's just too, we, that's a given. That's too easily attainable. My personal opinion.
I, I think we've attained it. The only thing is, we really didn't have a record. My point was, we really didn't have a record of it. So if we're gonna hold ourselves up to goals and Dr. Kozak up to goals, we oughta just, you know, if, and I, and I agree with Paul, that I think we've all gotten it. And the, the, the county one, the county, by the way, the county dinners or however, the meetings are very informative. I've, I've learned a lot from those, so. I think Paul's right.
Madam, I, I offer then, if that's the case, and you want to track every, every workshop, every conference, every training, have them all board-approved. This way, we'll have a record of each one, even if there's a fee or not. And then the public can see too, who's going where and when.
Yeah, we can, we can-
And you can keep track of your own, just so you know, if you go to New Jersey School Board and you look under transcripts, it gives you a list of all the NJ School Board trainings that you attended.
What you do is you go, you go to the website.
Hey Patty.
You go to the homepage of the website, and in the upper right-hand corner, it will say login. You'll put in your username and your password. If you've forgotten it, there's no big deal. You can automatically get that, a new password. And your username, by the way, is whatever email address we have on here for you. Okay? So if you've forgotten your password and you have five different email addresses, this is the one that password information is going to be sent to. And then you would go, be able to go to my, I believe it's my membership. There'll be, it's again in the upper right-hand corner after you log in. And then there'll be a panel that comes down, a column that comes down on the left side, that's a blue panel, and you go about three-quarters of the way down, and it says transcripts. And then you would go, the very last one is my transcripts, and you click on that. And anything you've taken, if you've been on and off the board for a number of years, I went on to see mine the other day, just because I was trying to help somebody walk through it. And the best way for me to do that is to actually do it myself as well. And my stuff was on there from 1998 and 1999. And every county meeting that I go to now and facilitate is on there as well.
I didn't know that.
It was a little mind-boggling to see this, this very long list. But you guys can, can track your own individual credits. I will track your board credits. So there's two buckets of credits that you can have. There's the individual, that, anything that you go out to, anything that you go to, whether it's workshop, whether it's a county meeting, whether it's a regional program, whether it's somebody else's county meeting, you get individual credits for that. I can't track that, just because I'm not at all of those things to see you there. Your mandated training, you get credit for all of that. The buck, the, so that's your individual credit bucket. Then you have your board bucket. And that's when I come in, or somebody from school boards comes in and provides you with training, and you get a credit as an hour, is equal to an hour. So for however long, tonight, you'll probably have two credits for this. And I track that, because that goes towards board certification. As an entity, you would receive credit for certification. So I keep track of that. We've just changed the requirements for that. It used to be 18 credits, so 18 hours over three years. It's now 16 credits over four years. So I'll start tracking, and what I'll do is, I'll take a look at how many credits you have. They use, they drop off after the, well, they had been dropping off after the third year. Now they'll drop off after the fourth year. Unlike your individual credits, which just stay in there forever. Okay? So I'll keep track of that, and I'll be able to let you know where you stand in terms of that. But that's something that you could work for, toward as a board, if you wanted to, towards board certification, if you wanted to do that.
Not now. Because we, we never talked about becoming a certified board. I mean, I know we've done it many, many years ago.
So that's something to think about for future, perhaps. And then the last one was to evaluate and adopt a plan for enrollment growth and facility needs. It sounds as if you're well in progress with that as well.
We are, but we've nev, we have not adopted a plan yet.
Okay, so do you want to continue that one?
I think that's important, to continue that.
That should be our number one. And Kathy, we don't, I mean, I don't know that we need to bring goal number two forward either. I think we can, we don't have to have that as a goal for next year. We, if we want to have two other goals besides the-
And I agree, because we did adopt a new system. We're still working on making sure that that system is, is continued to work with us.
I just wanted to point out that it's still a work in progress, but I, I would say that we've achieved it. We just need to tweak it a little bit. So we, we solved two extra goals.
So when we choose goals now, are we, should we be doing that through the self-evaluation?
I can tell you from having reviewed your self-evaluation, that these are things that you've talked about in the self-evaluation as your challenges for the upcoming year. There's nothing that you've done district-wide, in terms of district goals, or that you're talking about in terms of board goals, that hasn't been talked about in the evaluation. So you wanted to, to continue the second goal as well, right?
No, I don't, do, do you feel like we need to? Because we've already come up with a new system of-
Oh, okay, I thought I heard somebody say that we cannot abandon that. Okay.
No, we could abandon it.
Okay.
We'll abandon it.
Okay.
No, it's not abandoned. We don't need to bring it forward. You've completed it.
Okay. So you talked about some training, to get additional training in the self-evaluation as well, and...
I don't know if anybody's had an opportunity to go through the self-evaluation.
No.
Can I ask a question about this? On the last page, the current year versus the prior year?
The chart?
Yes. This year, we're beh, we're lower in every category?
Yes.
So what does that mean for us?
That means that the board last year, when they evaluated themselves, the lighter color bar going up, column going up, is what you gave yourselves last year, what the board's rating was last year. And the board's rating this year was slightly lower on all of the, on all of the areas.
So would a goal be to raise the bar for the board?
Sure. And one of the things that, that you'll want to do is, when you review the board's self-evaluation as you're looking at it, is really take a look at what value the board gave to each of those nine items that we ask you to evaluate yourselves on, and then how you feel you performed as a board in each of those areas. So you want to see those scores, those ratings of value to board performance, the board rating, in each of the nine areas. You want to see those pretty close. Okay? Because that's your expectation, what you want to achieve in terms of the value, and then how you're actually performing in that same area. So you want those to be pretty close. So what you may want to do is, you may want to think about having, having me, having your field service rep now, come in maybe two times over the course of the year or more, and provide a program that you all would choose. There's a, the left-hand side, the last page on the left-hand side of every packet that I will bring to you has our sampling of programs. There's only two things that cost you anything, three things that cost you anything. That's community planning, strategic planning, and superintendent search. Everything else is dues-based. So you could take a look at that, and you could decide what you would like me to come in and provide to you. And each of those is generally an hour. And what a lot of boards will do is, they'll have me come in an hour before their meeting. I know that I, you know, I have a deadline, and I work to get you through that deadline, so that you can start your meeting at the time that you need to start it at. Goal-setting is typically a little bit longer, just because of the conversations that, that come up. And they have been very good conversations, and courageous conversations, I might add. So. So that's something that you could do, if you wanted to add a couple of training sessions.
Board members? This is up to you. Would you want to add training sessions during the year?
Well, I, I think it's a, it's a very good idea, because I think that professional development is key to improving ourselves as board members and, as a board in general. You know, if we can't make, make it to all the workshops, or many of these workshops, it's very nice, and it's a great luxury to have the workshop come to us. And I think it's something we should take advantage of.
So in-house continued professional development for board members?
I think it's a great idea. All right.
Your space bar is not very sensitive.
So what about a third goal?
Sorry about that.
No, that's okay. I'm just having a heck of a time.
I don't know. And you could ask. You could ask.
You're saving that to your thumb drive, right?
You don't have to copy any of this down.
When we did the superintendent's evaluation, one of the things that a number of us brought up, and I think it was kind of a consensus in the group, is that we felt that the format presented by NJ SBA, not to be disrespectful in any way, didn't meet our needs, wasn't representative of our district. And we had talked about wanting to do our own. Couldn't that be a board goal, that we would develop a very specific for our district, and our district needs superintendent evaluation with help from NJ SBA?
You would be able to, you, you would be, you don't have to use our tool. Okay, so that's first and foremost. We have, we are in the process of revising the tool. And that, we've been working with ASA, the Association of School Administrators, for probably about two years now. And that is going to be rolled out at workshop, and it's looking at the new standards. It will be more in line with teacher evaluations, in terms of how they're evaluated. And will give you lots of different options. It will also give the superintendent the ability to drop in links to show, to demonstrate achievement or progress towards those particular areas. So you'll have a choice, I started to say chance, and it came out, joints. You'll have a choice this year, for 2017-18, of whether you'd like to use the current one that you just used last year, or the new one. And that will be rolled out. We have, I think, five or six different sessions over the course of workshop to be able to explain what that process is going to look like, and how it's different from the current process. The goals portion stays the same, because that's in statute, so that has to stay the same. But the leadership skills are based more on the sta, on the standards. So it's on district vision, mission, and, and goals. There's, I forget what all of the, the actual terminology is, but there's more community engagement, more student achievement, more advancement of curriculum, and things like that. And then, as I said, the superintendent in there, they will be able to add links that will demonstrate that they, the evidence, that they've achieved those things. So that you'll be able, as a board member, to just click on those links and see that information. So it's something to think about. You would, the thing about the board, the superintendent evaluation, is it should be mutually agreed upon by the superintendent and by the board, so that each of you knows what to expect and what you're evaluating. He needs to know what you're evaluating him on, you need to know what you're evaluating him on. So in October, you, at workshop, you'll be able to see that, and, you know, and then make a decision. And that, that will be rolled out then. We're doing a joint rollout with ASA, so.
So there's your extra training this year.
Can I just add a comment? Just if you, if you're not near completion, and I know it's been a long process, I was involved in piloting the current system way back when. And I would certainly, if, you know, there was a need, make my services available, not my services, but input, you know what I mean?
Yep.
I'd be more than happy, because the current system never really used what I had asked for to begin way back when it was developed. And that is, that whole second section, I have no input into.
Right.
And that's been a, an issue from day one. And before the second one rolls out, or the revised one rolls out, if there's still time to add input, I'd be more than happy to offer some input.
And I think that that was part of the goal for the association, too, was to be able to have some people pilot it. So I'll bring that back to the committee that's working on it. I'm not on that committee, but I'll bring it back to them and let them know that you'd be happy to do that.
Is that okay with the press?
Yeah. And then perhaps the board could, could participate in this as kind of a, you know, a pilot that doesn't mean anything, but, you know.
The evaluation would count, but you would get the feedback from-
Well, you would get, you would be able to provide us with feedback as to how easy it was to use all of those kinds of things, but not necessarily have it as the evaluation count. Because I think if they're gonna pil, if they're gonna use some folks to pilot it, they'll probably do that before the evaluation season starts.
Oh, I see. Okay.
I believe, anyway, but I'll check.
Michelle?
Just refresh my memory. The comments, these were taken from the comments during the evaluation, correct?
Whatever you all put in is what's on that sheet. I liter, today, with the way this is done, and it's been this way for the past, I would say, six years almost now, I literally click a ma, I, I see a tracking report, I see how many people have completed it. When the board president says to compile it, I click the mouse, it compiles, I print it out, and that's-
So every comment that each individual made is in here?
Yes.
Okay, well, I don't see my comments. So that's why I'm wondering, were the, were these chosen, or you're saying every single one?
No, every comment should be in there.
When did you submit your?
I was within time. It was within the amount of time that we did it, two weeks ago?
I'll have to check and see. I don't have the list with me of who completed it.
Okay.
So, but seven had completed, one person completed it yesterday, and the others had completed it a while ago, so.
You included yesterday's?
Yes.
Okay, then mine was way before that.
Okay.
Okay.
And I don't, just so that you know, I mean, there's, there are no names associated with any of the comments, obviously, because they're supposed to be anonymous. But I don't even go in, it might give me the thought that I should, go in and look at each individual person's comments to make sure that they're all in there. That I, we've never had to do that before, so. I apologize, but I can, I can look, Michelle, and see. Okay?
So what would you like to look at, at for a third goal, for the board?
The biggest, one of the bigger problems with the evaluation process is, I can't go in and do an evaluation as you do, because I'm not a board member and I don't have a district and a board. So a lot of times, what happens is, when you folks call and have an issue with the superintendent's evaluation or the board's self-evaluation, I have to send you to somebody in IT. Because they can get into the system and see whether you've completed it, whether you've, you did it, but you didn't submit it. I wouldn't have, the only way I know is, when it's submitted, it goes on my tracking report. Okay, I will check, Michelle. I will check, Michelle.
I did it out, so.
I can't help you there, Michelle.
And I'll check, as soon as I get home, I'll check and I'll shoot you an email. Okay? Is there, is, is there a wish to have a third board goal?
The only thing I was thinking is with the referendum coming up, maybe it's important for the board members to be out in in the district more when there's a, an event or something, so that they get to know who we are, because they don't, people, we don't go to a lot of different things. We don't get invited. Maybe we should, but even back to school nights or when the, back to school for staff, but it might be important for the board members to attend these things. Any?
Ken's volunteering to be more public.
Okay, Ken.
So increase, increase board member attendance at events?
Would you?
Within the district? One of the things that.
Comments, questions, or anything about that?
Something that one of, several of my other districts have done that are large, because, and you are a large district, by New Jersey standards, anyway, is that they, they bring in the district calendar the month before. So in August, you would be looking at September's calendar. And they go through and they sign, they put their initials next to whatever they're going to attend anyway because of a child or a grandchild or some special thing that they've been involved in. And then if everything isn't, doesn't have somebody's initials next to it, it goes around again to see if anybody can go to it. That might be something that you may want to do because you are a large district and do any of you have kids in the schools at this point. So, you know, you would go to the things, then, that your children were involved in, but you may be able to go to something else on another night that nobody else can cover. So it's something that you could consider in an effort to increase board attendance at events within the district.
Sure.
We've been looking, we, being the group of us, looking at our district website to try to improve it, and we're adding, like, little by little, making improvements. But one of the areas that we have improved is our district calendars, a Google calendar, a shared calendar. And we're, I don't think it's where it needs to be yet, but if you go on the district website, we want it to be color-coded so that you will see all the activities located in that calendar. So that would make it a little bit easier if you wanted to look at events coming up in the schools. Just an easy way to do it.
Ken?
I just bring something up, so it's not a suggestion, but just something that I've seen the, that town council does, which may be effective, or maybe not. But what they do is they break down the calendar of events, and then they solicit the team, you know, basically to break down who's gonna go to what. And this way, they're assured that there will be a certain amount of attendance, you know, by by council members, and then other members know that there will be attendance at that event, and they can pick another one. So maybe that would be something that we could look at.
Steve?
I think that's a very good suggestion, Ken, and just along those lines, you know, it's, it's, it's wonderful for us to go out, wonderful for us to go out to different events, community events and school events. But at the same time, just going there or being there really isn't, what's that accomplishing? We need to be able to, you know, in some way, interact with with the people that are there, whether it be parents or what have you. Because otherwise, you know, there has to be some exchange of information and ideas. And just going there and sitting there and saying, well, I went to the event, and people not even knowing who you are, if you're not even introduced, how's that gonna accomplish anything? So I think that's something we have to consider before we even think about going out to events is how are we going to interact with with the the people at this event? And just along the other lines, I'm just throwing this out, just a thought, is maybe even attending various PTA meetings, if we can get invited to PTA meetings, then we have, you know, parents there that we could talk to and interact and, and, you know, maybe we could just say a few things or be there just to answer some questions.
Thank you. As a suggestion for the board to consider, to your point, Steve, is, you know, how will people know who you are? A thought might be for the board to, for the district to purchase, well, not just a name tag, but maybe shirts that say the Monroe Township Board of Education. I've seen even jackets, boards have jackets that identify them, or a, you know, a golf shirt or something stylish or something like that, that as soon as you would go to something like that, that, you know, then you can run, but you can't hide. They'll know who you are. Just a thought for the board to consider, I don't think it would be that expensive to purchase shirts or something like that. Just throwing it out there, I know other boards do that, so.
Years ago, oh, maybe more than 10 years ago, we had a little name plaque, and it would just say, didn't, it did have our name on it, I think, but it had said, like, our name with Board of Education member. And if you went to out in the community, or if you went to a township event or whatever, then people would know you're a board member.
Well, we could wear our, our passes, so our little Board of Education with the.
But it was, looked nicer if you were at a more formal thing than maybe a football game or something.
We could still put our years up, you know, on it. You don't want people, I mean, I like the idea of the clothing, but you don't want people who were board members, like, you know, for a limited period of time, have a staff shirt.
They'd have to turn it in when they.
We'll reuse it, right? We'll recycle.
You know, you might seriously have to do that, because at least our name tag says a year on it. And for safety reasons and security reasons.
And I'm gonna suggest that that stuff that you could talk about in the action plan of how to develop that, but if the goal is to increase board member attendance at events, that would be the the goal. And then you could talk about all of this when you are going through developing the action plan. I would caution you, though, that being present at, you know, events, you have to make sure that you're not inadvertently trying to, or giving the impression that you are representing the board, or have the authority of the board to speak on something unless you do have the authority of the board to do that. Okay? So do you want to increase board member attendance at events?
No.
Yes? Skip it?
My concern is that there are board members who we know can attend events, like, their schedules are so, so it, you know, my fear is that it will become, somebody's gonna turn around and say, oh, you're only there because that's a year that you, you know, it's political or there's something. So I think that that's a miniscule problem when we have actual, like, working problems within the board. Like, I'd rather see a goal, I I have felt that our, and I see in the thing, it's come up a couple times, like, how committees communicate with each other. I'd rather see something that really matters to how we work as a board as a goal than attending, you know, things, because it's, it's, I think, we're a volunteer organization, and some people work really long hours and other people don't work at all, but we have, we're being pulled in so many different directions. I just think that that is not, I don't think it's a quality goal, to be honest with you. Sorry.
So suggest something, Patty, because last year we.
To improve the written, to to improve how we communicate as committees. I often feel that we don't, you know, we come to the commit, well, we sit down at the board meeting, and there's a committee report, but there are times that there are better committee reports than other committee reports. We don't get the full picture often of what's happening in committees. I think people think that things are, they don't trust what's happening in committees sometimes because they're not part of it. I just think we, you know, to come up with a process where we better share, where we keep a written notice and after a committee meeting, it gets sent to all the board members, because otherwise, we don't, you know, just a brief discussion at a board meeting, it doesn't feel like you're getting enough information as to, you know, because sometimes if, say, Marv's not here, there might not be any committee report, or it's part of a committee report or something. I would rather see us work on something that actually improves how we work as a board.
I think that's a good idea. Well, you know, getting that information will help us formulate questions and, you know, it'll give us good information.
Steve?
I know, and I was very appreciative, and I hope I'm not stepping on you. I know Dr. Kozak was giving sort of a summary of of the committee meetings. I found that very helpful, because the problem, and you're right, Patty, and Jill, the problem is, you know, when we're sitting at a board meeting, it's a committee report, you're hearing this for the first time. Well, if we get it right after the committee meets, you have time to ask questions, to think about different things, and you know what, it was being discussed, it's not last minute, and, well, here it is, you know? So I I think that would, building a system to do that would would certainly improve our inner workings as a board.
Communication between the board.
Add a comment to this?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, with Google Docs, I was doing that, with board docs, it's very easy. So at the end of the committee, it would just, it's just a matter of, I think the committee chairperson has to decide who should do the comments. If the committee chairperson's going to write the comments, then you write the comments in that board docs, and when you complete it, you can send it to the whole board. It's very easy, everyone gets an email, you open it up, and it's all, it's in there. If the board chairperson feels that he or she does not want to do it, and they would task that with one of the administrators, we could certainly provide a summary as well. I try to after some of the committees, like policy and personnel, you know, some, it's sometimes a matter of the committee, by the time you get done the meeting at night and getting it done, but this, it would go back to what you were saying about using the system and using all the capabilities of it. It'd very easily be done and sent it out, so.
No, that's a good idea.
Question, without even sending it out, isn't it, aren't the updated notes from every committee in Google, in the?
They are. You could, you, a board member can go on any of those committee meetings at any time, but the the problem is that, well, the the problem is, is that you have to put the comments in there. So not every, not every committee has comments written, and you can see the agenda, but not everybody puts comments.
The notes afterwards, okay, so we do for.
Like, you're the chairperson.
Everybody does.
Do you do the comments in the, on the agenda? In board? I'm sorry, I put you on the spot.
Well, I think that that's part of what goal two was, just enhancing that, I don't know.
Well, maybe it's more, a better communication between committees.
Well, then carry goal two over. I thought we were gonna eliminate it, but if that, that should be part.
No, but I think it's different than goal two. Goal two was coming up with a, a, a new way of of communicating. Now, I think we have to approve the communications between the committees.
Okay, by using more docs, though. We don't need another system.
Not another system, but if.
We need a form that we develop or just a way, you know, a procedure.
There's a, oh, I'm sorry. My apologies. Like, the the form that we use for policy and personnel, if you like that, we can adapt that, Ms. Gorsky, if you're okay, and Dr. Alvek.
I do add the notes.
You have something in there.
I always add the notes after curriculum.
Right. But I think.
They're in there.
In your weekly confidential.
I also put it, I also put an update in my weekly confidential every, after a curriculum committee meeting.
I think what we need to make sure is, after the comments are put in the the committee report, if you hit send, it may just go to the committee members. I think we have to take it upon ourselves to make sure that the whole, it's sent to the whole board. So you will get an email, I mean, you get it now with the board agendas. It might say, board agenda updated or something. And you would get that after every, every committee report.
Steve?
If if I did a summary of something, a meeting, and sent it out to the whole board, isn't that considered a board meeting?
If they then started to respond?
One of the things that you may want to do, that I was just going to to suggest after the conversation, is you may want to check with your board attorney on sending it to everybody. Some board attorneys are recommending that that not be a practice.
Okay, I I would have to defer to the attorney.
Some are okay with it, but some are recommending that they not.
But I would have to defer to the board attorney, and I certainly would. But I would say that our board attorney sends out legal updates, and the updates that we send out every week to the board, just like the committee reports, it's not engaging in a group conversation for action, it's merely a, an update.
As long as you're not having a conversation.
I think we have to say, do not respond.
Well, I, we've always done it where we could send out information to the full board, and usually would write, do not respond.
Right, it's one-way information. So if you wanted to respond to something or check about something, you would contact the committee chair. But you wouldn't go back and forth in an email.
And if you use board docs, you, there is no reply. You get an email, it is a link to the summary. If you go to reply, you, it's, you're not replying to a person. It's, it's the software. You know what I'm saying? So you, that prevents you from getting into that, that conversation. It's not an email.
Better safe than sorry, you know?
You still, you still may want to check with your board attorney on that one.
Would you like me to do that and check? Okay.
Okay. So do you want to do that in a goal, as a goal, as better communication between committees?
Yep. I think that's a great idea.
It's a very good idea.
Can I ask how many committees you have?
Well, actually, six would add.
We add, huh?
Right, but we have negotiations, too, so that makes.
Seven.
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 Yeah, we, we mentioned that.
Have you ever, did Gwen or Mary ever talk to you about our three master committee system?
What is that?
That, it's three master committees, and you may, that may be one of the, the professional development pieces that that you might want. It's, it works very well for some boards, it doesn't work for others, you know, not everything is going to work for every board. But it's three master committees. It's education, which is curriculum and instruction, and special ed. Operations, which is facilities, finance, transportation, buildings and grounds is facilities, and then human resources is personnel, but very high-level personnel. Usually, human resources is personnel and legislation. And then policy goes through any committee that it would touch. So it may end up having to go through all three committees, or it may just have to go through one committee. But it's then three board members on a committee, so everybody's on one committee, there's a chair. There's also a fourth seat that's available, then, for somebody to come and go on if they like. The agenda is sent out to everybody ahead of time, there's an administrative liaison. Usually, the superintendent is the liaison for human resources. The assistant soup for curriculum and instruction would be the education, and the BA would be for operations. And so there's one meeting a month, pretty much, for everybody. When it works, it works really well. But again, I'm saying it doesn't work for everybody, but we could talk about that and talk about how that, how that can, can vet out. So that might be something to to consider as one of the training programs.
Each board member is only on one committee.
Each board member is assigned to one committee, but each board, there's a fourth seat that's available at every committee meeting. And what the person would do is, because the agendas are published the week before, so, or, you know, as soon as you're done with your next meeting, you have your agenda for the following meeting. So somebody could call and say, you know what, I'd like to be on the edu, I'd like to sit in that fourth seat for education because you're gonna be talking about STEAM, and I'm really interested and have some things that I might be able to contribute to that. And that would be on a first-come, first-served basis through the chair, the chairperson of that committee. So it's just something to think about, that we could talk about at a future meeting. Okay? So at the, so after this, then, the board is going to come up with an action plan. I'm going to send you a memo which encompasses what we've talked about today. Superintendent and the administrative team will come up with action plans for the district goals, you'll come up with action plans for the board goals.
Who comes up with the action plan for the board?
You can, you can either work as a whole board to do it at a board meeting, or you can assign a committee to do it, or you can ask the chairs of a couple of committees to work on that. It's, it's very simple, there's a sample in your packet, and I'm gonna send you a sample as well. It's really not brain surgery. The board goals are not brain surgery to do an action plan for. So that's something that's, that's very easy to do, and there are samples in there. So I'll send you all of that information. And then again, when you have, when you're asking the superintendent to come, to present an update on the progress towards the district goals, you can, as the board, present what you're doing towards the board goals. Okay? Any questions?
Is there any questions from anybody? So then I think what we accomplished, what we needed to do this evening, and it only took two and a half hours.
Thank you so much for your time, I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Mary.
You did, you did have some very courageous conversations tonight, and those are not easy to have sometimes, so I thank you for. So what I do with the goal, with the goals memo is I send it to the board president, the vice president, the superintendent, and the BA. I ask, it's gonna have a ton of attachments to it, five or six attachments. I'm gonna ask you to review it and then send it out to the rest of the board. Mr. Gorsky, you will automatically get this.
So are we approving the goals tonight?
No.
No. Okay.
Thank you for your time.
It was a good meeting. So we're. So we're finished with that. Well, I think...
Do you want to do the evaluations? If you would like to, you certainly can. It helps us for future programs and developing future programs.
Do you want a break now, or how about after other board business? Okay. So number eight on the agenda, we're back to the agenda. We, we thank you for your help in helping us achieve what we needed to do tonight. Is there any other business from any member of the Board of Education? I see Mr. Ryback has his hand up.
Always having a hand up for something.
Ooh.
Just as, for the sake of clarification, for one item that was at the town council meeting agenda last night, I have something I'd like to read. Regarding the second read of the bond ordinance last night, and the authorization to bond municipal finances rules differ from that from the public schools, and that 5% of the project must be put down by the municipality, and then they can bond for the remainder. As the ordinance was $2,500,000, times 5% equals $125,000. The municipality will pay $125,000 from their operating budget, and they will bond for the remainder being $2,375,000. The school district will not and cannot contribute towards the purchase without voter approval. I think that clarifies some issues, and I really have to thank Mike Gorski and Alan Weinberg for really getting me information so expeditiously, and, and, and on their own time, so thank you very much, both of you.
Thank you. Any, Michelle?
To add to Mr. Ryback's notification, last night was the agenda meeting for the township. Actually, for a second reading will be voted on on September 6th, if members of the public want to be there to see that. So it, it was, it was just put on the agenda for, for yesterday, and it will be voted on. And if people want to see the whole ordinance, it is on the township website, it's ordinance So they can read it, it's already in the public. Nope, that's a mistake. The, the ordinance that I just mentioned is the Schoolhouse Road property. Let me see if I have the other one. Okay. The ordinance for a second reading on September 6th, for the 2, $2,500,000, and the estimate is approximate, and what Mr. Ryback just read, the estimate for $2,375,000. That ordinance, again, will be on September 6th, and it is 072017-20. So it's 07, 2017, dash, zero or 20, okay? Zero, two, zero, or 20. So both those ordinances, 19 and 20, will be on, for votes, on September 6th.
Okay. Anyone else from the public? Anyone else from the, from the board? Seeing no one in the public. Okay, then, closed session resolution, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Township of Monroe hereby moves to go into closed session in accordance with the Sunshine Law, Chapter 231 of the Public Laws, 1975 NJSA 10:4-6 through 10:4-21, to discuss the following subject. Discussion regarding superintendent merit goals pursuant to the employment agreement between the superintendent and the board. Following closed session, action may be taken. The discussion conducted in closed session can be disclosed to the public as such time as the need for confidentiality no longer exists. So moved by Mr. Ryback. Second by, which one would like it? Patty will, Patty, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Then at this time, we will go into closed session. Okay, at this time, the board will move back to public session. And having no further business, the next scheduled Board of Education meeting will be Monday, oh, it's not Monday, September 13, 2017, 7 o'clock PM at the Monroe Township High School. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Ryback? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned.